Before the comp plan, what was something else?
Yeah.
I've upslept since.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, okay.
Good to have you.
I'm sure y'all want.
Oh.
Yeah, we're not.
I guess I've done all kinds of stuff in this city, sure, years and years. Been over for about twenty years.
Everybody ready? This is the Andover Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. We'll start with a roll call. I might make a first announcement. We do have a new planning commissioner. I think everybody here at the board realize that. Gary, it's good to have you.
Thank you.
And welcome.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll do a roll call.
Stephanie Gillespie.
Lynn Heath.
Mike Warrington.
Brian Lindaback.
Bill Schnaber.
Gary Israel.
All right. So we have some minutes from September 19th. I will be abstaining from those as I was not in attendance.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from September 19th?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And two abstentions. We have committee staff reports. Les, do you have any staff reports for us beyond what we have here?
You have the reports there. Just today I looked and we've had seventy-eight new single-family house starts this year, eleven duplexes. Commercial activity is strong again this year, so things are looking up. I think we've kind of found the new normal after the recession and we'll expect between sixty and a hundred new houses a year.
Well, that's good news. Keeps us all busy. We need some new neighbors. All right. There's any other questions of staff at this time? We'll move it along.
No.
No questions?
No, yeah.
Okay. So we have our first case is number five, Zone 2017-04. This is a public hearing on application filed by Rosemary J. Claudie Family Trust for a change of zoning classification from the present R1 Single Family Residential District to the B2 Neighborhood Business District located at 338 North Andover Road, Andover, Kansas. And the applicant desires change the zoning classification in order to facilitate special use expansion on the existing rental store there. We have the zoning report as well as a checklist here. I might run through a couple of housekeeping items before we get too into this. We have made notification, public notification. And so... Are there any disqualifications?
No.
No.
No. Okay. None here? And has there been any ex parte communication?
No.
In this case?
Nope.
Okay. And our notification was in the Butler County Times Gazette on October 28th, 2017. All notices were mailed to the applicant and fifteen real property owners of record in the area of notification on October 25th, 2017. Since twenty days has expired and elapsed between this time, I'll declare that proper notification has been given unless we hear otherwise. I think... All right. Les, could you provide us a brief synopsis of this case?
I think it's... I've pretty well explained in the memo, this is a vacant lot. Has been a vacant lot for quite some time. It is adjacent to the existing rental store. And the next case to follow on the agenda will be a special use to expand that equipment rental yard.
And just so we're all clear, the green should extend up to the red boundary. Is that correct?
Correct. For some reason, the shade didn't extend all the way to the property line on that exhibit.
Okay. All right. Appreciate that. Any questions of staff on this item? This is a... May I make a statement that this zoning classification is part of our comp plan and is... Would be accepted there. So with that, I will call the applicant to the podium. And if you would, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nathan Elmore and I'm the representative on behalf of Rosemary.
Okay.
I'm the owner of Andover Rental.
All righty. Do any of you have any questions of the applicant?
I don't.
No.
Anything to add that according to what's already been submitted?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if there's no questions, maybe we'll just have you sit down for a moment. And if there's any further questions, we'll call you back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on this case. Yes, sir, please stand up and address the committee here.
Tim Berry, 347 Port Avenue. My house is actually the one with the kind of east of the property there with the tree line row. I've spoke to several of the neighbors and we actually, I wanted to let you guys know that we... I've already spoke to Nathan about it a couple of times, that we actually support this. There's no one that's, you know, has any concern or any complaints about it as long as he doesn't do anything, you know, two o'clock in the morning, you know, anything like that. So I just wanted to give the neighborhood association their... Let you guys know their blessing, so.
That's appreciated. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or concerns or comments?
I do have one question. Les, it says in here that there is a sewer line easement that traverses the property from east to west. Where exactly is that on that property? And would it ever be affected by any building or any kind of concrete or anything that might be covering it?
That's been one of the points of contention on this property is that that easement is just about where the shading shows there.
Right down through the middle?
Probably that white circle on the map in Andover Road is probably about where the sewer is. And that effectively bisected the lot so that any building that might have to be built outside of that easement.
Or they could relocate it if they chose, Les? Is that correct?
I think it runs something like across here.
But that line could be relocated at later dates?
It could be at a considerable expense.
Yes. What size line is that?
It's an eight inch.
So is the plan for that to be outdoor storage space then? Or is a building going to go up on that part of the property?
I think those are questions you'd have to ask the applicant. There would be nothing that would prohibit building buildings up to the easement, but of course not across the easement.
Any other questions? All right. Any questions of the applicant?
I do have one more for Nathan.
Okay. If you would.
Sorry, Nathan.
That's all right.
It does say that there's going to be some outdoor storage.
Correct.
Okay. Is it... Where on that lot would that be? And if it is outdoor storage, is it equipment or is it gravel and stuff? I know they do have sand and gravel and stuff for making cement and stuff.
We don't have a mix plant, so we don't do anything with cement. It would just be outdoor storage for equipment.
Okay. And would there be any kind of fence or anything that would block that from view from Andover Road?
We had visited... I had visited with Les and we had discussed, you know, the six-foot chain link fence across the front and side, and then a six-foot wood fence along the rear against the... To buffer the properties at the back, the residential properties.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
And do keep in mind, we do have a special use case that's coming up next, so we'll be able to address it.
Okay.
Any more comments at that time? This is for the base zoning district, B2. All right. We do... Unless there's any further comments, I think we need to go through some more housekeeping items, the findings and factors we have to go through. We have seventeen of them. Yep. All right. Would anybody like to volunteer to read through the seventeen findings?
I'll go ahead. Factors and findings. Number one, what are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood?
I think we've been shown that and understood that.
Yeah, this place is a proper place to go from...
B2. Or three or four. Number two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change?
And it is a separate or single-family going to B2.
Okay. Yes. Three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration? Staff suggests the subject property has a sewer line easement that traverses the property east to west, that bisects the lot building area, which represents some difficulty in developing the property as a standalone enterprise. That being said, I think their expansion for storage of equipment and so forth would fall into place there. Yes?
Yes.
Four, would the request correct in error in the application of these regulations?
No, no.
Five, is the request caused by changed or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such changed or changing conditions? Staff mentions the properties along Andover Road in the area have generally trended to commercial uses and probably will do so from now on. Yes?
Concur.
Agreed.
Six, do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist? Or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Staff writes water, sewer, and public streets are in place and adequate. Concur?
Concur.
Yes.
Seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights of way, easements, access control, or building setback lines? Staff, Andover Road Street right of way would need to be dedicated to the fifty-foot minimum. Concur.
Yes.
Yes.
Eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property? Staff Site Plan Review Committee approval would be required for any improvements. Nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? Staff, not applicable.
I would say yes. I think there are probably other places in town that, you know, are suitable for this, industrial area.
The problem is, the rental agent that it's going to be next to is right there, too.
That's... Yeah, I understand.
It makes it real difficult to use a different spot.
Number ten, if the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? Staff, the success of the existing rental center requires additional space for expansion. Concur.
Concur.
Yes.
Yes.
Eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted? Staff, the surrounding businesses and Andover Road traffic make the subject property less desirable for residential use.
The new zoning is more applicable.
I would concur.
Twelve, to what extent would removal of the restrictions, the approval of zoning requests detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? Staff, increased activity, lighting, noise, et cetera, have an effect on the adjacent single-family residences if not properly screened or buffered? I concur. Thirteen, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations? Staff, restricted list of permitted commercial uses provides a lesser degree of incompatibility with nearby residences. Concur? Fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? Staff, the comp plan contemplates the conversion of residential properties along Andover Road to limit it, commercial uses, and the intensification of commercial uses around the commercial nod... Node, I should say, at Central and Andover Road. Concur?
Concur.
Yes.
What is the nature of the support or opposition to the request?
There's support.
Staff mentions none at this time, but I believe the neighborhood to the east supports it. Okay. Sixteen, are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in its evaluation? Staff knows of no reason not to approve the requested change in zoning district classification pending the outcome of the public hearing. Concur?
Yes.
And lastly, seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? I don't believe.
I don't think there's any issues there. No hardship imposed by the applicant.
Our chair has the nomination coming up.
So what are we looking at here? Eleven, fourteen, fifteen. Thirty-five, fourteen, fifteen. We have heard all seventeen findings and factors. Unless there's additional questions for staff or any additional deliberation, might entertain a motion?
Yes, have a motion. Having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the zoning application, I, Mike Warrington, move that we recommend to the governing body that case number Z-2017-04 be approved. Changes to the zoning district classification from R1 Single Family Residential to B2 Neighborhood Business District based on the findings three, five, eleven, fourteen, and fifteen of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of the hearing.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? All right. Motion passes. See you in amps, Lee. We do have one last little piece of closing remarks here for this case. This case will be forwarded on to the governing body with the planning commission's recommendation with a written summary of the hearing for consideration of regular meeting on December 12th, 2017, which begins at seven o'clock here in this room, City Hall. If you... If protest petitions filed against this case can be directed to the planning... To the city clerk fourteen days after tonight. And December 5th is the deadline for that. And if there are any properties that are protesting, need to have accurate legal description and be within the twenty percent area of protest around the property. All right. And we just want to thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight on that case. Next item, number six, is associated special use 2017-02. Same applicant and very similar conditions. This is a special use for the use of the rental center, including outdoor storage, in B2 Neighborhood Business District. Of course, if the property doesn't get approved at the council, this special use probably should be voided as well, so they should be somewhat considered together, so one can't go without the other. The applicant desires to expand the existing rental store and staff knows no reason not to approve the special use pending the outcome of the public hearing conditioned upon installation of solid... Six-foot solid screening fence on the east side of the property. Les, is there anything else to add here?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. And any other questions of staff on this?
I got a question on procedures here. Is it necessary to go through the same questions again and get the same answers?
Well, we might come up with some different answers.
These are required to be separate public hearings, so all the proceedings have to remain separate.
Yeah, I figured that. I just thought I'd ask.
Yeah, thankfully.
At this time, we'll ask the applicant to present any new information on the case.
I don't have any new information to present.
Okay. That's kind of what I thought. I did have a question about the screening component to this. I know we've... Our community has made some major improvements to Andover Road to the tune of several million dollars. How do you intend to screen the property, both from Andover Road but also from the perimeter?
Well, the plan currently is to put a six-foot solid wood fence along the back. In discussions with Les, we had discussed chain link on the side and the front as the current property to the north has a special use for being a nursery of some sort. And then chain link along the front as we currently have on our property now.
Uh-huh. Would you be objectionable to putting solid screening across the front for any part that's utilized for outdoor storage?
Well, yes, in a way, because that eliminates the view of people to see our equipment. That's our form of advertising, is having our equipment to be seen as people pass by. So if you were to put a solid fence or solid screening in the chain link along the front, it would eliminate the view of the equipment.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that was my concern.
I just think that... I mean, from my standpoint, it's a lot of outdoor, you know, stuff parked on a lot. And I think it should be screened. There's been some major improvements in the area. And I think it would look more kept if it were screened off, at least for the part that's outdoor storage and then for your display area or whatever. I think that would be okay. But I think to have just a bunch of equipment on a lot, I think it would be, in my opinion, it would be better to have it screened. I don't know. Maybe I'll shares that same sentiment.
Maybe some additional landscaping or something could be added, you know?
I was just going to suggest that maybe you could send that message to the Site Plan Review Committee for their review when it comes to that stage.
The front, I'm really not as concerned about as maybe the sides, you know, protecting from each... From the neighbors and stuff like that. Like I said, I think it's a good idea to have it so you can see what's there and for advertising and that's, I mean...
Although I think he's about thirty feet in the air now, isn't he, with some of that equipment? You're not going to miss it.
Yeah.
But they do bring that out front for advertising.
Yeah. Yeah, I just... I think that, I mean, from my standpoint, I think it would beautify and make the corridor look better if we had screening there.
I would agree.
I think... I don't think, you know, there's a good website for everything and I'm sure a lot of people, if they need to find out if there's a piece of equipment there, they'll look at the website and such. But that's my thought on it. And we are expanding it to a much greater degree along Andover Road. It's not as if it's a small operation. Now it's growing and I think that's prudent.
I would disagree, but also I'm the owner of the company. So, you know, my opinion will probably be different than yours.
Sure.
From an advertising perspective, a lot of people don't... They drive by and see the equipment. That's what drives them into rent it. We have lots of people that come in and say, hey, we saw this sitting out front. You know, how much is it? Can I get it this weekend? If you put all that behind a fence, it's going to eliminate the view of that. I'm not opposed to doing additional landscaping. I'm not in favor of putting screening along the front. We don't have screening on the fence that we currently have along the front and that hasn't been an issue for the past eleven years that we've been in operation.
So Nathan, what's the condition of the fence that's out there right now? Have you had any issues with it?
The fence that's in front of our property currently?
Yes.
It's just a chain link, six-foot chain link fence with a gate. So no, there's... We've never had any complaints.
Isn't sagging or anything like that? It's standing up correctly?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So the new one would tie right in with it?
It would tie in on the north side of the building and go across the front and down the side.
Is your intention to display all of your inventory or just like one of each unit?
We don't usually display all of our inventory because a lot of it's stored inside and a lot of it's on rotation out on rentals. The main thing is just to have the equipment to where people can see it as they pass by.
You mentioned it's going to extend from the corner of your building?
Well, wherever the setback ends up coming into play.
Okay. It is going to be a setback, though, from...
I... You'd have to probably refer to Les on that. I don't remember what he told me the setback was from the easement on the front. There's so many feet.
It won't be up to the sidewalk, anyway.
Well, that's my concern.
The minimum front yard is thirty-five feet. And the existing building is at or about that thirty-five feet. And again, I think we're talking about a lot of issues here that are more site plan specific that possibly they could get into fencing and landscaping and fence setbacks and so forth once they see how they intend to use the property.
Okay. Thank you.
it talked about all the outdoor storage will be kept inside the building or in the rear of the building. Is that what you intend to do with this as well?
As far as outdoor storage, yes. Currently, we move our equipment out front for advertising purposes, and then we move it in each night at the close of business, and then put it out in the front again each day.
Uh huh.
Is it necessary to move it in, or do you just do it for security?
No, we were told when we opened 11 years ago that we were to move it in every night, so that's what we followed.
That's what I was asking, thank you.
Further questions from the applicant? Nope. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask anybody from the public to stand up and...
Tim Berry, 347 Fourth, same as 10 minutes ago. Our only concern is the noise, and I believe Nathan discussed there was going to be a buffer, and then I, I read somewhere, were you going to do gravel? Is it going to be gravel? Is that kind of, that's, okay. So this is more, probably more site council, is the wind and dust. We all know how gravel roads are with the wind. I, I just don't want my whole backyard covered in gravel dust that it could possibly be, so that's just a concern that we have right now. So, but other, besides that, we have no issues, so...
Anyone else? All right. Any more deliberation here about what sort of measures we want or do not want to go with the special use? The dedication, I presume, would be a requirement to making it to the council, is that the case?
Correct. I would ask that you add that as a condition of your recommendation.
Sure.
As well as whatever screening you would choose.
I just feel very strongly that, you know, we as a community have invested so much to put things underground, to put in very nice light poles, to, you know, putting banners on the light poles now. I think it's, I feel strongly that, you know, it's, there's a major investment across the street, beautiful building. I just think it would be better for our community to create a screening buffer for the things that are displayed, you know, or that are held in, in the rental business in the back, so the back app, back of house where things are stored should be screened from the public view, just driving up and down Andover Road. I do have concerns for the neighbors as well. They do have a significant stand of trees on their property on some, some portions of it, and so I think there's, some of that's covered already, but again, I think for the same reasons as the front, there should also be provisions for the rear to be screened with at least a six-foot tall, you know, opaque fence, so that, you know, equipment and things that, you know, could look, it could look tattered at times if there's just stuff just strewn about, in my opinion, that's my opinion, but I think that would be a, a good, a good thing for the community, and I don't think we're harming the business at all in doing so. Those are my recommendations, I think, and of course, site plan review will have their, their stake on it as well, when they do expand. Any other sentiments? Okay. Well, let's get through these 17 findings and factors. Would you mind going through?
Not at all.
Yeah, thank you.
I should have it memorized by now. Factors and findings. One, what are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood?
Covered that.
Two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change?
Yeah, it covered.
Three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in this consideration?
Nope.
Four, would the request correct and error in the application of these regulations? No. Concur?
Yes, concur.
Five, is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such changed or changing conditions? Properties along Andover Road in the area have generally trended to commercial uses. Concur.
Growth of Andover.
Six, do adequate sewage disposal and water supply in all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist? Or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Water, sewer, and public streets are in place and adequate. Concur.
Concur.
Seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights of way, easements, access control, or building setback lines? Andover Road Street right of way would need to be dedicated to the 50-foot minimum. Concur?
Concur.
Eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property? Site plan review committee approval would be required for any improvements. Concur?
Yep.
Nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? Not applicable?
Concur.
Yes, concur.
If the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities?
Yes.
Success of the existing rental center requires additional space for expansion. Concur.
Concur.
Eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted? Surrounding business and Andover Road traffic make the subject property less desirable for residential use.
Concur.
To what extent would removal of the restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? Increased activity, lighting, noise, have an effect on the adjacent single-family residents if not properly screened and buffered? Concur.
You say that, though, but you'd have, if you had a drive-through or something like that, there would be more traffic and more noise than what this would have. Because this is going to be open more during daylight hours, business hours, and not 10:00 at night.
Yeah. Thirteen, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations? Zoning regulations provided for the special use process for use is not specifically permitting in the zoning district, but which could be permitted in specific locations. Concur?
Concur.
Fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? The plan contemplates the conversion of residential properties along Andover Road to limited commercial uses, and the intensification of commercial uses around the commercial node of Central and Andover Road. Concur. What is the nature of the support or opposition to the request? We have support from the adjacent neighborhood.
As long as the dust didn't get you high.
Sixteen, are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in its evaluation? Staff knows of no reason not to approve the requested special use pending the outcome of the public hearing, conditioned upon the installation of a six-foot solid screening fence on the east side of the property. Do we need to add anything to that?
Yes.
I think so.
We'll add it on the bottom of the motion.
And seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request?
No.
And that should do it for factors and findings.
So we need the west 50 feet dedicated, and then the provision for screening in with the motion?
Yes. What was the 50 feet part?
The west, any, I guess not the west, it's whatever they own up to 50 feet of, for Andover right away.
Right away.
Yeah.
Brian, I've got a question for you. I've been mulling this in my mind. Is your concern about equipment stored in front of a screening fence or displayed? And that, that was key in the case 11 years ago, that...
Sure.
That they allowed the display during the day, but at night it's considered stored, so it would have to go behind the fence.
Well, I would say both. I mean, to a certain degree, I don't think it would be appropriate to, to display every item they have for rent up front, or even, you know, a tenth of it, you know, for that matter. I think they, they do display quite a bit on the week, weekends primarily that I've seen, or other times of, of the year, but my main concern is that the, the storage in the back, I presume the, they're not going to expand a huge building that would cover up the front of the property, and that the bulk of this property is going to be used for outdoor storage, period. I mean, that's, that's what I would assume, given the nature of this property, so I think in that light, that there's not going to be a building facade covering the view of, from Andover Road, that it'd be appropriate to screen that, just as if you had a, a neighbor that had a whole bunch of stuff in his backyard, and you didn't necessarily want to see all that, you'd like your neighbor to put up a fence. I don't know that everybody appreciates rental business. I do, I appreciate rental business, I frequent this establishment, but I just would like to see that some of that, the visual aspect of it be, be covered up, for the most part, along that front edge, and so the, the day-to-day operations of what they bring out for display, I have, you know, some concern about, but not as much as I do for the stuff that's secured in the back. I think, I think I pretty much made myself clear there, but if anybody...
We didn't ask if there's a separate entrance into this newer property.
Yeah, I would guess there'd probably, maybe...
My concern is, you know, the equipment is, that he has displayed now is right up on the sidewalk in front of the building. Is that going to continue?
No additional curb cut would be allowed on this, will it?
There is an existing curb cut. You can see right about...
At the property line?
At the green line there, there's an existing driveway. Which would, would work well today. Their parking area is one way in, one way out, and it's not, not very coordinated.
That will, this will help.
I guess, and I don't, that was the time, the 35-foot setback, is he going to display equipment the way he is displaying it now in front of the fencing?
I think that's what Brian is getting at, is that, that display in between the fencing and the sidewalk.
Well, yeah, as far as, I don't have a, a huge problem with some, some display, but, you know, I don't know how to put that into a motion to limit it to a certain quantity, that's enforceable.
Well, I guess, tying back with the applicant's request for advertising, you know, and promotion, I mean, as it is right now, he's displaying in front of his structure...
Yeah.
Along the sidewalk there, is that going to continue? Is he going to use that property, that land area there?
Well, what are the...
For the same reason, and then at night, he's moving everything back in behind the fencing, so I don't know that the...
If they're planning smart now on how they set this up, they'll plan on being able to drive in one driveway and out the other.
Correct.
So there's going to be a, a good-sized area that will not be used for displaying equipment, because it's in the way of getting in and getting out.
And is the parking going to increase?
I think those are all...
I would think so.
Those are all site plan review sort of questions.
I agree.
You know, I think a lot of these sort of details will get sorted out there, however, I think the baseline for the screening is what we're really trying to focus on here.
Chairman, we got the gentleman, what's...
Sure.
...he's making a comment.
Yeah, you guys have any specific questions for the applicant?
Any of the questions that were asked up here, if you just want to... Well, in regards to parking, the plan would be to extend the parking lot that we currently have across the lot to where you could pull in and then pull back out. Like you said, the equipment won't be parked in that area, because you have to be able to pull in and pull back out. So the, the grand plan over the years is to be able to get our equipment to where it's not right out on Andover Road like it is currently, but the problem is, we currently are so narrow on space, and the building is so close to the street where we are right now, we have virtually nowhere to park the equipment. With the addition of the lot next door, we'll be able to back that display up further away from the street.
Maybe, maybe, Brian, here's a compromise for you. Maybe you could make a condition that there would be no storage or display in the west 35 feet of the property, which would mean that anything that was set outside of a fence would have to be behind the building line.
Sure, I, I understand.
So it isn't so encroaching into the, the public space?
Yeah, I understand that, but I, I still have an issue with the whole, I mean, I wouldn't solve my problem with the whole chain link fence versus opaque screen fence. I, to me, an opaque screen fence is, in my opinion, is going to be a better product for the folks of Andover. I think they do good business, I mean, I don't think, they have good signage, I mean, a lot of businesses will have a sidewalk sale, and that's how they direct, you know, bring out customers, and, you know, I don't know that having outdoors, their, their temporary, you know, not, uh, display areas...
I think, I think we're getting into, this site plan committee has done an excellent job over the last 20 years that I've worked with them, and I think we're getting into their area, and I don't see with their reputation where we need to be wasting our time on this personally.
I agree. I think we need to just suggest for them to review certain items and let them make that decision.
Next event.
Any other comments on this topic?
I'd, I'd agree that we turn it over to the site planning committee and let them do their thing. I think they've done a great job, just as Lynn said, you know, and if we don't like what they come up with, then we send them back to do it again.
Well, I don't think, there's not a recourse for that. Once, once we're done here, we're done here. You know, it goes to council, then, then it goes to site plan, once plans are...
And we haven't had a problem with what they've done.
I'll leave it up to site planning committee.
Yep.
All right, motion?
I have a motion. The only one I'm still not, is this one.
Dedication.
Dedication what?
The right of way along Andover Road up to 50, you know, the 50-foot right of way up to four Andover Road.
Okay. Having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors of the evaluation of special use application, I, Mike, warrant to move that we recommend to the governor body that case number SU-2017-02 be approved for the establishment as a general rental center, including outdoor storage in the B2 Neighborhood Business District, based on the findings of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of the hearing. Listed additional, the, the extra findings, five through eight, 10, 13, 14, and 16, and also that we recommend a request to site plan review to review the screening...
The right away along Andover Road up to fifty, you know, the fifty-foot right away up to four Andover Road.
Okay.
Having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors of the evaluation of special use application, I, Mike Warrington, move that we recommend to the government body that case number SU dash two thousand seventeen dash O two be approved for the establishment as a general rental center, including outdoor storage in the B two neighborhood business district based on the findings of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of the hearing. Listed additional, the extra findings, five through eight, ten, thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen. And also that we recommend a request to site plan review to review the screening and landscape buffer options on the west side and a solid fence rear on the rear on the east side. We also request that the site plan review committee review the gravel and the dust on the rear to satisfy neighbors. Also continue, let me skip to this one, dedicate the fifty-foot right away to the Andover Road. I have this one here, but you might want to help me with this. Continue to store equipment in the rear during non-operation hours.
In closed area.
In closed areas.
Yes.
As they're continuing doing.
I second it. We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Motion passes. Next item is number seven. This is Z two thousand seventeen dash zero five. It's a public hearing on an application filed by Craig and Linda Hill for a change in the zoning district classification from present R two, single-family district, to R four, multifamily district located at eleven forty-nine North Main Road and twelve oh five North Main Road, Andover, Kansas. The applicant desires to change his zoning classification in order to construct multifamily dwelling units on the property. The subject property is within neighborhood revitalization program area, and staff knows no reason not to approve the application pending the outcome of this hearing. So we do have a couple housekeeping items here. Any disqualifications on this item?
No.
Nope. No conflicts, okay. Any ex parte communication?
No.
Nope, okay. And again, this case was advertised in the Butler County Times Gazette on October twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen. All notices were mailed to the applicant and twenty real property owners of record in the area of notification on October twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. There's been twenty days elapsed, and I'll declare that proper notification has been given on this planning commission hearing for this case. Les, is there some information you can provide us beyond what's in our staff packet?
I think it's pretty well covered in the package. You can see up on the screen that this is two existing lots that together total eighty thousand square feet, one point eight acres, along North Main Street in the neighborhood revitalization area. I think when we get into the findings and factors, you'll find that there is a mix of single-family and multifamily properties in the area, as well as a mix of owner-occupied and for-rent properties in the area.
There was a, Les, there's a property kind of to the south and to the west of here recently that had some multifamily put on it, and what zoning classification did they have? That's what I'm talking about. I think it's on Mike Street.
Oh, that was back by the water tower.
I don't recall if it was R three or R four.
Okay.
I think I remember that.
Is there a reason why they're going for R four as opposed to R three?
In the scenarios that the applicant has presented to staff, the only real difference is the R three has a twenty-five-foot minimum yard requirement, whereas the R four has a twenty-foot requirement. When these two properties are combined, it makes it a little bit of a tight sight if you were to consider having two rows of houses along a common driveway to have what would, if added altogether, be a hundred feet of yards, two front yards and two backyards adjacent to an existing or to a future shared driveway.
But they don't intend to dedicate any street right away or anything like that? It's the setback is really just the front along Main Street is the main concern, correct? Or is that?
I don't know that I have an answer for that.
Okay, maybe we can ask the applicant.
They're contemplating several different layouts.
Okay.
Whether that be a public street or private street, lots and blocks, or a lot with several dwellings.
I see, okay.
Street down the middle and houses on blue sites.
Any additional questions of staff at this time?
No.
Okay, can I have the applicant come up and address the commission and please state your name and address and?
Tom Baumann, twelve forty-six North Forestview, Wichita, Kansas, and I am a partner in the development of this piece of property with Craig and Linda Hill.
Okay. So the setback issue is kind of, you heard my questions about this setback, and is it mainly just to get the front setback down to, that's why you're going for the R four?
Well, it's not just the front setback, it's the side yard setback too, as you are allowed to put the street in. We were thinking about doing a private street rather than a public street, so there would be no more funding from the city for it. And to get maximize the usage of space with how the lot lays out, the engineer suggested that we use an R four rather than an R three.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I think we're good for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Les, what's the maximum density of R four in comparison to R three?
They're essentially the same.
Okay.
One dwelling unit per three thousand square feet.
Okay, so.
I was just trying to pull up the zoning map here for you to answer that question.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that. Well, I.
It's basically just setbacks.
Well, it's more than setbacks, I mean, but the dwelling, just knowing that dwelling units, we can't exceed. I mean, it's not like we're going from, it's not like we're going from ten to fifty or anything like that. It's.
Restricted.
Relatively the same, so that's, that was a question I had, but. Any, any other concerns or questions while Les is looking that up?
I don't.
None here. All right. Anybody else like to take on the findings and factors? Unless.
Can you go through your checklist or?
We've got a checklist here, seventeen of them. Do you want to do it again?
That's fine.
All right.
Factors and findings. One, what are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood?
I think we covered that.
Covered that.
Both multifamily and single-family.
Yeah. Two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change? We've covered that.
Pretty much the same.
Three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration?
No.
No. Concur.
Thought you were saying A.
Four, would the request correct in error in the application of these regulations?
Nope.
No. Five, is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such change or changing conditions? Staff, neighborhood revitalization program is intended to incentivize the improvement of blighted areas by providing a partial tax rebate for the increases in property values. The tax incentives make the demolition of dilapidated structures and construction of new housing alternatives more appealing to developers. Concur?
Concur.
Agreed. Six, do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all the necessary public facilities, including street access, exist, or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Staff, water, sewer, and public streets are in place and adequate. Concur.
Concur.
Seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights of way, easements, access control, or building setback lines? Staff, plating would be required. Concur. Concur. Eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property? Site plan review committee approval would be required. Concur. Concur.
Yep.
Nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? Staff, no properties zoned appropriately for the proposed use are available in the area. Concur. Ten, if the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? This is not applicable.
Nope.
Eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted?
Yes.
Yes, concur.
Concur.
Twelve, to what extent would removal of the restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? Staff, increased activity, traffic, et cetera. Concur?
Yes.
Thirteen, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations? Staff, the proposal parcel does not fully comply with the intent of the district because it is not located on a collector or arterial street, but the configuration of the parcel does not lend itself to full utilization with a more restrictive zone. Concur? Fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? Complan supports the development of a variety of housing options. Agree? Fifteen, what is the nature of the support or opposition to this request? None has been shown at this time.
Nope.
Sixteen, are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in its valuation? Staff knows of no reason not to approve the application. We can concur.
Concur.
Seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? Does not?
That'd be my guess.
And that's it for the factors and findings.
Okay. I see that on some of the conditions, we talk about plating. It is a platted lot though, correctly, right now, or what's the story with that?
No, it's not a platted lot.
Okay.
It's a plat of survey.
A plat of survey.
From the nineteen forties and fifties.
So we need to get, we need to get plating involved with this motion?
Correct.
Okay, and then there's, sewer is not overtasked for this area if we dump a bunch more sewer down the pipes there?
No, there's adequate sewer in there.
Okay, good. All right, so we got everything sorted out there. All right, any last deliberations?
Plating is number seven, so that'll be in part of it.
Yep.
I have a motion. Having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the zoning application, I, Mike Warrington, move that we recommend to the government body that case number Z dash two thousand seventeen dash O five be approved. Change, change the zoning district classification from R two, single-family residential district, to R four, multifamily residential district based on the findings, five through eight, eleven, fourteen, sixteen, of the findings and factors of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Closing remarks, we, this case will be forwarded on to the governing body with the planning commission recommendations and a summary of the hearings considered at this regular meeting of December twelfth, two thousand seventeen, and that's at seven P M. City Council, this room here at City Hall. Protest petitions filed against the property may be received fourteen days after tonight. And the deadline would be December fifth at four thirty. Moving on to the next item.
Thank you.
This is a special use. Special use, two thousand seventeen dash zero three. It's a public hearing on application filed by Nicole Holland and Linda Lovett for a special use request to develop a writing academy on A one, agricultural transitional district located at twenty-two thirteen East Thirteenth Street, Andover, Kansas. The applicant desires to establish a writing academy on the subject property, and staff knows no reason not to approve the special use pending the outcome of tonight's hearing. Limited to not more than fifteen horses on the property at any given time, and no outdoor lighting arenas or or no public events. All right. Do our usual list of. No disqualifications on this? Anyone?
No.
No.
Okay.
Don't know what locator, is this one fifty-ninth on the left side of that yellow area?
Yeah. No, that's, that's Prairie Creek Road.
That's Prairie Creek Road, yeah, yeah.
Oh, the other direction, okay. Oh, I know what's that.
And is there any ex, no one tell you ex parte communication?
No.
No.
Okay, all knows, okay. And this as well was notified in the Butler County Times Gazette on October twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, and notices were mailed to applicants and eleven owners of record of real property in notification area on October twenty-fifth, and the record shows that at least twenty days of it has elapsed between then and now. And I'll declare that there's proper notification has been given. Les, this sounds pretty straightforward, but maybe share with us any background that you have.
I think the the map on the screen kind of explains it all. This property is at the edge of the city limits today on the east side, on East Thirteenth Street. Along the east edge of the property is a cross-country electric power line and fuels pipeline. Creates kind of a natural boundary. You can see the Prairie Creek addition across the street. The pavement on Thirteenth Street ends just to the east of the west side of the subject property. It's, the subject property is served by Rural Water District number five. Sewer, public sewer is available adjacent to the property. There is a substantial waterway along one side of the property that would come into consideration, but I think the owner is well aware of that. I think the owner probably needs to state their case to you and explain just exactly what it is they want to do on the property.
A couple questions for you that I have. Is there going to be any need to put restrooms on the site as part of this type of use? And if so, I presume we'd need to get sewer and water to the side as well. And then there's the old paving requirement of of the street. How are these impacted in the development of this property?
Correct. I think the applicant probably can answer those questions to you about how they intend to use the property.
Okay. If there's no other questions, staff?
City limits on the right side?
Yes, the red line there is the city limits.
Everything to the south of the railroad tracks there, the Red Bud Trail, is not in the city, is that correct?
Correct.
And then everything? And then everything to the north is in the city?
Correct.
And then everything to the east is outside the city?
Correct.
Okay. With that, could we have the applicant come forward and share some insight on the project? And just remind you, state your name and address for the record?
Nicole Holland, fourteen fifty-three North Ridgehurst Court, Wichita.
All right, so had some just general questions about how this facility will be run and, and what's needed for it, so maybe just give us a summary of what your thoughts are.
Sure, as far as the sewer, we're planning to run sewer, it'll be a private road, so that covers that issue, I believe. There is pavement to the westmost side of the property, so there is access from pavement on it. The plan right now is a six-stall barn with an apartment and indoor riding arena and a hay storage facility. No public use per se, more private, you know, if people in the area want to use it or so, you know, arrangements can be made in that sense, but it won't be used for showing or, you know, having large events there.
So there'll be a resident on the property as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And the plan now is to do, attach to the barn primarily for safety concerns, that way if, you know, there's a fire or any issues in that front.
Les, the extension of Thirteenth Street, I presume the property to the north has petitioned to extend that as well? Is that true?
Correct. You'll see here, Brian, the next phase of the Prairie Creek addition is here. That will be the next extension of the street. The following project would extend from that street down to connect to Thirteenth Street, and Thirteenth Street would have to be paved to that point.
To that point? Okay. All right, and so the applicant have to be, you know, paid to extend it all the way to the city limits, or is that to be determined yet?
That's to be determined yet.
Okay, very well. Have to leave some things in the box for planning commission, for the plat and such. Okay. Thank you, I don't, do you guys have any other questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
So it's an indoor arena or a riding area?
That's correct.
Will there be exercise areas outside?
There will be towards the east most of the property. It'll be a cross-country course, so it'll just be used during the day. So there won't be any outdoor lighting.
Okay, and since it is going to be, I, I could come and take lessons and things there?
So the stipulation with the city as of now is to limit it to six horses, which I currently have six, so that would be something that I'm not sure the city would approve of fifteen, because essentially we, my plan would be to get a trainer in that had lesson horses, so the public could use it more. I have off-the-track thoroughbreds, they're not okay for kid lessons. So that's something that I'm open to, but the city would have to approve it.
I just know that my daughter went to a riding academy and every once in a while they'd have a little show and they'd invite people and so there'd be quite a few people that would show up for those.
Yeah, and as far as in the area, Jackie Schwartz is a trainer that's just right down the road on Central, you know, she's expressed interest in using it, it as an indoor riding facility, especially during the winter months, and she does have horses that are okay for lesson horses, so that would be an easy haul for her just to utilize the property. I would just want them to sign a waiver and make sure their horses are current on vaccinations.
Gary, I think I could expand a little bit on that. The city animal ordinance only allows six horses maximum on a tract of land that's ten acres or larger. So what Ms. Holland is asking to do is have six of her own horses there. Now that wouldn't, that, that would be six horses that live on the property, that, that are harbored there. Now if someone was to bring a horse from the outside, it could be on the property, but it couldn't stay there, it would have to leave at night.
Okay. Is that where the fifteen comes into play?
Correct.
Okay.
You mean if, okay, six, if there's ten acres or more, six acres, six horses?
Six is the limit, no matter how many acres.
Half section or?
Correct.
Ten acres, okay.
Correct.
So presumably you would only have ten students, maybe at a time, taking lessons or thereabouts?
Probably less, that would be a maximum.
Right.
These are thoroughbreds, some of these are thoroughbreds.
Yeah, there wouldn't be fifteen, but maybe ten of, since you were thereabouts. Okay.
And one last question I have, disposal of the manure, what would you do with that? Because, I mean, you're gonna have some south winds blowing up into that neighborhood and I can just imagine people going, whoo, man, there's a bunch of horses down there.
And I'm open to hauling it off or composting it or spreading it, you know, there's several different options. Composting would be done towards the back of the property, and as far as fence easements, I'm coming in about a hundred feet off of the Red Bud Trail to allow for any future if the city of Annover does want to expand on that. And then the fence line from Thirteenth is setback approximately seventy-five feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Les, could there be horses on the Red Bud Trail? Or is that a topic for another day?
I've got to, I've got to think about that in a minute, Brian.
Sure.
I don't believe animals are allowed.
Well, we'll just leave that one for some other time, but I was just curious with the proximity of the Red Bud Trail and, and such, you know, it's always nice to utilize things that are right next door if you can, but we'll worry about that some other time.
Got a pretty large area there to ride horses in.
Yeah, that's right.
It's not, yeah, a five-acre lot.
Well, are there any folks from the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We do have some more findings and factors to go through. Anyone like to go for those? All right, we gotta, we gotta take her.
The voice is still working here.
All right, factors and findings. What are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood? I think we've addressed that. Two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change? Address that. Is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration? No? Four, would the request correct in error in the application of these regulations? Five, is the request caused by change or changing conditions in the area of the subject property, and if so, what is the nature and significance of such change or changing conditions? None. Six, do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist? Or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Adequate sewer and water are available. Concur. Seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights of way, easements, access, control, or building setback lines? Dedication of the fifty-foot minimum street right-of-way is required. Concur?
And probably plating is required since they're going to be getting a building permit, I presume. So.
Eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property? No? Nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available or not available for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? No. Not applicable. Ten, if the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities? No? Is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted? Yes, concur? Twelve, to what extent would removal of the restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request, detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? Increased activity, traffic, lighting, et cetera? Concur? Thirteen, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations? The zoning regulations provide for the special use process for uses not specifically permitted in a zoning district, but which could be permitted in specific locations. Concur?
Concur.
Fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan? Comp plan suggests the current city limits at the east side of the prop, subject property remain as the growth boundary until more infill occurs within the current boundaries. In the interim, the proposed use is a good transition to agricultural uses. Concur?
Concur.
Fifteen, what is the nature of the support or opposition to the request? None at this time? Sixteen. Are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in its evaluation? Staff knows of no reason not to approve the special use pending the outcome of the public hearing. Limited to not more than fifteen horses on the property at any given time, no outdoor lighted arenas, and no public events. Concur?
Concur.
Does that fifteen need to be explained more, or is that?
Fifteen?
Fifteen horses?
Oh.
At any given time?
Any given time.
Not overnight.
Seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general wealth, welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? No. Mr. Chairman?
All right, I think we have some items that we can identify that support this case. Anybody like to take those and put them into a motion? Okay, you're going for everything, all right.
We're gonna miss you.
For a record here.
They go from all.
My last time here to say it.
Yeah.
Having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the special use application, I'm Mike Warrington, move that we recommend to the governing body that case number SU dash two thousand seventeen dash zero three be approved for the establishment of the riding academy in the A one agricultural tran, transition district based on the findings of the planning commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing, listed at the, with the following conditions, six, seven, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen?
I second it. We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, did you get those conditions there limiting the not more than fifteen horses? No lighted, that was in the motion?
Yes, yes, that was number sixteen.
And also the dedication of the Thirteenth Street right-of-way?
Yes, that was number seven.
So we, well, amend those into the motion as stated.
I concur.
We have concurrence with the motion and the second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion nay? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. And closing remarks, again, this will be forwarded on to City Council on December twelfth at seven PM. And if you'd like to file protest, you can file on before December fifth. And that concludes this case. We will now recess the planning commission and reconvene.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask if, does anybody need a break at this point?
I think we're making good progress.
Five-minute break.
We need, okay, we'll take five minutes.
Okay.
We've been here, uh, how many?
Hour and a half?
Yeah.
Post-motions by one individual?
Just barely.
Barely, okay.
Yes, it is. Aaron Israel.
Are you Aaron Israel's dad? Okay, I graduated with him.
I heard you moved it.
Yeah, we kind of lost about half of our space to the Dollar Tree, so didn't leave a lot of room to operate anymore, and we're like in the growth phase now.
They've got the power lines.
I'm a little hungry, because I live in Green Valley, so I walk to work all the time, you know?
So where are you moving to?
We upended up on Central Greenwood, so it's just right over there by the biggest frozen areas.
Academies and taking care of horses, I mean, there's two of them just right south of me.
Kind of part of our brand and stuff. We're still gonna be open through the end of the year.
Zoning change sign going up on the property.
Can ride down Stephanie's house on a horse. So who took over the other space?
The Dollar Tree. Lots of horses there.
You have some? We'll have Dollar General and Dollar.
We're next door to similar situations.
So how long have you been on?
Lot of horses on our road between the dust from the gravel. Hundred twentieth is extremely, it's very dangerous, it's very dusty, very hilly, rocky.
Confined too, with all the trees.
Bicycleists and horses and...
I've seen some horses down there when I've been, I've actually been riding, actually riding, riding my bike.
Yeah, on Hundred twentieth?
Uh huh.
It's a hard ride.
It's a little bit rough for you.
Hundred thirtieth is okay.
I'm amazed at anybody jogging, riding, bike, or anything on some of those roads.
I know.
So we got the two, save the best for last.
Yeah.
I told my husband ten o'clock is when our dinner would be made, so. Before that, it's just a bonus.
Is there a betting line on this?
Yeah. Still have an hour and a half. I'm, well, I'm like telling him what to do now, because he's like, I'm hungry.
Get the noodles, put them in the pan.
Normally at work still anyway.
My son calling Jan every night, how can I cook this, mom? He's becoming quite the chef.
Yeah, I was just gonna burn through these last two and Lynn's like, wait!
Bathroom, probably.
That's fair.
So we're losing?
Four.
Four, okay. I wasn't aware of that.
All right, that's the question we have. First one said she doesn't intend to return, Jason doesn't intend to return, likes going to City Council.
I'm on the line, I can go either way. I feel like my attendance is so poor and Tuesday, Tuesday nights are just tough.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Mark thinks he has a couple of replacements left to lose, four.
Yeah.
Well, especially.
This is like the only meeting in the last.
Yeah.
Little eight or ten years, but we actually had eight appointments.
Eight or ten years?
Yeah. Well, especially with the way things are moving, you know, in the city.
Increased activity.
Right, I mean, we're, we're gonna be hard pressed. I think I've got a better handle on what I'm doing, so I don't see.
Audrey, yeah. She loves in Forest State. Yeah, tons.
She came back last night for a long break.
Is that, she's been back before that?
Yeah, she's been back, mm, two or three times.
Be a little more selective on what I'm taking.
Is she in the dawns?
Yes, yep, mhm.
That can't be the, you wanna help, you wanna help a lot of people doing what I do. And it's, it's kind of that I don't need to do.
Three roommates or just one?
She is in a suite, so.
But, you just gotta say no.
When I moved out on the other side, which, to, to a single, which is kinda weird.
No is a hard word sometimes. You're like, ah, yeah, should be saying no internally, but you just say yes. I'm like, okay. But I, why did I do that?
They, you know, she has to, um, get her degree in, um, athletic training.
How's your store doing out west?
Going good, that's the one that I don't have to worry about, so, and I can't go over there. We have the two east ones right now.
We have the check that she wants to go.
She wants to go.
Yeah, through the end of the year, at least.
That's a good environment and medical school.
He's got another one under his head.
That's my choice. That's my choice?
Yeah, I know.
But, we'll see. Can I say this first? She's doing pretty good right now, she has all As and one B, so she'll.
Bars are coming on, 'cause it's her three days in four.
You know what's, yes, probably so. What's really nice is them able to take all their horses in their senior year.
She's not ready for some of that boring stuff.
Yeah, she's, she's finished one semester already, so at the.
What time do we start?
We've done five minutes. We've definitely done, it was twenty-five after.
Yeah, I was, I was on site.
We know what you're doing.
Sort of thing.
All right.
Yeah.
It's been about five minutes here. Let's.
Now, we made a motion to, uh...
Recess, and then.
Okay, we have made a motion to go to the.
Yeah, yeah, we need, we need a motion to, uh...
Make a motion that we recess the planning commission and convene the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Motion by Lynn?
I'll second it.
Second by William. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have VZA case V two thousand seventeen dash twelve. This is a public hearing on the application filed by Nathan, pardon me if I sp- pronounce it wrong, Kaitzer, requesting a variance from twenty-two hundred square feet, um, from the required one thousand square feet maximum aggregate total floor area for the purpose of constructing a thirty-two hundred square foot detached garage on property zoned R1 Single Family Residential District located at Harry, uh, four oh six West Harry Street, Andover, Kansas. Uh, the applicant desires to construct a large detached, uh, garage on this property, and staff knows no reason not to approve the variance as requested pending the outcome of this hearing. All right.
Let me look at picture up. That's, that's the next page.
Okay, we'll get that fixed here. That is for case thirteen. If you could go back, uh, one case, I think, or possibly forward, whatever. Yeah, that's the wrong, wrong case there.
I'll go next.
Give us just one more case and you'll be up. All right, that looks right. Okay. So, we have this case. Are there any questions of staff? I'll go through these few housekeeping items here in a minute, but, uh, Les, can you provide us a little background?
I think the application pretty much says it all here. This is a little over two-acre tract on the north side of Harry Street, just the west of Andover Road. It's at a point where, uh, the city limits at that particular location meets county property on the west. You just like to hold that? Uh, the, this line is the city limits.
Okay.
Subject property, there is a small sliver of property not owned by the applicant that's in the city. The horse farm adjacent to the west is in the county. Everything south of Harry Street is within the city. Everything east of the subject property is in the city.
Okay. Again, are there any disqualifications on this application?
No.
No.
None here.
And ex parte communication, any, any such on this case?
No.
No.
Okay. Um, this case, um, was notified in the Butler, uh, Butler County Times Gazette on October twenty-eighth, twenty seventeen, and notices were mailed to the applicant and six owners of record of real property in the area of notification on October twenty-fifth. The record shows at least twenty days has elapsed between the publication and today, unless there's any evidence, so the contrary, I'll declare that, uh, proper notice has been given. Um, if I could have the applicant come up and provide any background, that would be great.
Hello, I'm Nathan Keister, and, uh, I live at four oh six West Harry Street, and right now we have a contract that's pending on this, uh, property, myself, I'm selling the property, and, um, Brian is, uh, Brian Warren is my agent, he's sitting back here, so he'll come up here in a second, um, as well as his son is purchasing the pro- uh, the property for myself. Um, I'm actually, uh, really excited about some of the plans that Brian and, uh, Scott have for the property, and, uh, he did some really good drawings there, um, but I believe that, uh, with those drawings and the work that he's gonna put into the house and the property that, um, that he's actually gonna approve that area, so I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, when it's done, if you all approve that, of course, so, uh, but the contract itself is, uh, based on the approval of this building being built, so, um, it's contingent based on this building being built, so.
Any questions of the applicant?
Is this gonna be used for business?
Uh, that's something, I'm gonna have Brian speak on that, since that's, um, up his alley there, since he's purchasing the con- or purchasing the property.
If you could please come up and state your name and address for the record?
Thank you, my name's Brian Warren, twenty-one ninety-four South Welsh Street in Wichita. Um, no, it's not a business, it's gonna be my son's home, he is, uh, out of the country right now doing a photo shoot, he's a freelance, uh, videographer, and so he couldn't get out of the meeting, so, um, as you can see, it's a really lovely home, it's well-built, solid brick, and, uh, the plan is, first of all, in the front entry, to redo the, the whole entry with some column lighting and, uh, paved driveway up to the house, where it's dirt, uh, gravel right now. Uh, the house itself is in, like I said, very strong shape, but we're gonna, he wants to literally gut the inside, open up and do the vaulting throughout, and the granite tops and so forth. And also take over the garage space with a master suite, uh, so it's gonna be a really lovely little home. Then, the garage, we're using top line, uh, they're right on Andover Road, they do a wonderful, uh, metal outbuildings, and they're gonna paint the brick to match the actual paint color on the, uh, on the barn itself, with the black shutters, light gray with black shutters and white trim, it's gonna be very, very nice. New roof, all new HVAC, and we're tearing the front porch out and redoing all new, uh, front porch. And, uh, landscaping everything and getting the sprinkler system throughout and, uh, open to adding a lot more trees on this, it's a really wide-open space. It's a beautiful lot, but, uh, it needs some trees, and so, uh, we're gonna make a commitment to do that also.
Okay.
That's, and the building is forty by sixty, and it has an extended roofline over a slab, uh, on the north side.
That the entrances will be on the north side, then?
The entrance is gonna be on the east side.
East, okay.
There's a, uh, the door's gonna have a cover over it, and then there's a cupola on top, it's, it's really similar to what the neighbors' barns look like, yeah.
You're, you mentioned forty by sixty?
Yes, sir.
Am I looking at the right plan, this was forty by eighty?
That, that includes the extended roofline.
Yeah. Kind of dash line there.
Okay.
On the north.
I got you.
He has, uh, jet skis and boy toys and motorcycles, and the plan is to keep everything, right now they just sit out there, no vehicles out there, everything needs to be out of sight, so that's the hope to not have to do, we have trailers too, or he has a trailer, so.
All right, well, thank you. All right, well, at this time we'll open up the floor to any public comments on this case. If there's anybody would like to, okay?
I'm Kami Baker, one of the property owners at five oh eight, um, West Harry, it's the property just to the, the west, there's that strip of, that was mentioned, and then we're right to the w- west. The handout that I had the clerk provide with you, um, or to you, that first page shows what the planned, um, development is, the housing addition that's right across the street from us, and as you can see, it's a, it's a modern, fairly, uh, traditional plan, there's not any houses there that have metal buildings that are in this housing development across there. The second page, excuse me, is the house that would be three houses to the west of us, and again, any Morton buildings, any metal buildings are set well back behind the houses, and that's consistent throughout this, this area that we'll be talking about. I believe is indicated by the father of the purchaser, um, our buildings are similar to what I believe they're going to re- to construct, but they're quite a ways back to the north. His proposed, um, site is going to be right along our driveway, right along where we look out of the enclosed pool area that we have. The third page shows the house that is, um, closest to us, and they did a detached garage, and, but when they did it, they did it to match their house, and that's one of our biggest concerns with this, is the, the metal building, it's going to be running, as our understanding from the picture attached to the, um, application and just the, the layout of it, it's going to run north-south, so the doors will be then to the east, these two large overhead doors, not even regular garage doors, they appear to be large overhead doors, and that's from the picture he put at the back of his application. Um, the next picture is a house two to the west of us, again, he added a detached garage and had it match his house. We're not opposed to, we're trying to interfere with their rights to, you know, have an additional garage space, but we think it should be consistent with what else is being done in the neighborhood. And this metal building running the other way, that is three times the size of this house, um, and I, this is the first we've heard that there's gonna be improvements to the house, including redoing the garage, but this isn't gonna be conditioned upon anything like that. We don't know how long the house is gonna stay exactly the same, and there's gonna be this huge building then sitting there. Um, the, um, fifth page is our place, shows the front of it, and then currently, on page six, this is when we come into our driveway, what we see, it's open space right there along those telephone poles, and where he would be putting this would not be back where our Morton buildings are, but instead would be right across from the main area of our homes. Um, the page seven just shows how it, how it lines up, when you look at his application, um, his four oh six Harry Street, where that kinda gravel pad is, he's putting it right in between the gravel pad that he has there and the west boundary line of his property, which again is, you can see how much further back our buildings are. In the area, if people have had buildings, that's what they've done, if they've been metal buildings, they've been significantly back behind the lines of the houses, they have not been right there with the houses, let alone of this size. It's my understanding, some of the factors that you'll be considering is would this grant a hardship to this owner? Um, it certainly would not, he's not even the one that wants it. Um, there's lots of other buyers out there, uh, it, just because he has entered into this contract, contingent upon this, I don't think should influence your body to go ahead and follow what the current or- ordinances are, which only allow a thousand square feet. I think there could also possibly be an issue with this somewhat of a carport that's gonna be on the end of it, that's gonna have concrete, I think you've got some restrictions on, um, carports on, in city areas as well, but just the size of it, um, is just overwhelming to us, and especially when what we're gonna be seeing is just the back of it, when we look out, one of the main views from our area. We just a couple of years ago put in brand-new patio doors all across that way, new windows, everything, so when you look out from that pool area, that's what we're looking towards, what's now open space would be this building. Uh, I believe one of the other considerations that, uh, you'll have to, to decide upon is, will this allow the owner to make more money out of his property? I guess for this particular buyer, that's important, but he's gonna then, the current applicant is gonna be gone from the area, he's not gonna care how it continues to grow, how the neighborhood develops, I mean, everybody along there with new things that have been added on have done them in a nice, matching way to their houses. Um, this reminds me of, you know, when you come in on Kellogg and enter the Andover community, you've got storage buildings, you've got metal buildings, this would be the city's entrance point from the southwest, and I think it would be nice if you had good views as you go along there, and this one we just do not think would fit with the settings at all. The other, um, I showed you the, the planned unit development that's across from us, the other tract of land that's there is owned by a Nice corporation, so it's likely also going to be, at some point, a traditional residential neighborhood. Uh, let's see. One of the factors, I think, is will granting the variance be detrimental to other property owners or improvements in the area? We think absolutely, for some of the reasons that I've addressed, um, as far as it significantly impacts our supply of light, the supply of air to the property, which I understand is part of the consideration, it totally just gives us that view, because he's putting it so much closer to Harry Street than the other metal buildings. And would the granting the variance be opposed to the general spirit and intention of the regulations? I think so, when it's talking about three times the size that's allowed, it's not even just a doubling, I mean, he wants twenty-two hundred additional square feet to put this metal building along there. Uh, we, we think it's not good for us, we think it's not good for the city's overall planning of, of the area there, even though we're not in the city, um, we've tried, as any growth that we've been involved with, to do it in a, a nice, matching, well-built way, and this is gonna throw that off. The only other structure that's out there that is anywhere near this close to Harry, and it's even back a little further, is, was built over forty years ago. The trend has been to do things in a nice, in a nice way, and not have metal buildings out there that close to the road. Um, just a couple of, of other things, in the request, he says that his total lot area is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand square feet, and I think that's just not right, I think it's just a, a matter of not doing the math right or something, it's only ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty square feet, um, I, the two, two and a quarter acres, I think, is right, uh, but again, we've got a two-bedroom, one-bath house that I think is about fourteen hundred square feet, maybe fourteen eighty, and now we're gonna have possibly this thirty-two hundred square foot building. We're asking that the variance not be approved, and I think that's all that I had. Other property owner, Pam Baker, did you wanna speak as well? Okay, you did, okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Um, do you guys have any questions?
No. Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Um, is it the size of the structure or the type of construction that bothers you?
Both.
Which, which ones?
Both.
Both of them? So it's, so if they built a, a very... So it's, so if they built a, a very nice brick garage, you would still oppose it because?
If it was thirty-two hundred square feet laid out like that, yeah. If it was more like the other ones, you know, the, the other ones face or they're kind of catty corner, how you would think that a garage would be. This is going to be, what you're going to see from Harry Street is the side of it, because the doors are going to be facing to the, to the east. I mean, it's even going to kind of look awkward in there. You'd expect if you drive in, you go to a garage, the doors are going to be that way. And, and it's just going to look like a long metal building through there.
Is there a fence on your property line?
No.
No, no fence. And who owns that space between the two residences?
I believe he's here.
Okay. All right. And is that, well, I'll call him up if we want to talk to him.
Yeah, and his property is located such where he has that strip, but he's not going to be the property to the west of it, looking at the back of the feet.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Baker. I'm the other owner out there. Thirty-six years we've lived here. We've always enjoyed having the openness. Everybody, all of that was county when we moved here.
And what, what was your address again?
Five oh eight.
Oh, it's the same addresses. Is, okay.
Same one.
Okay.
And that property was taken into the city, but even when everything was in the county, we tried to keep con, sort of a, everything conforming. My husband deliberately put the buildings in the back so that they wouldn't present any kind of an eyesore or anything like that. The proposed building, building site that, that Nathan has, or Mr. Warren has suggested, from my side patio door, if I walked outside, it's right at ninety-five feet from where I'm standing. I agree that I don't want to impose anybody not to be able to build a, a two-car garages, so nineteen-eighties. Everybody's got a big garage, and I understand that. I'm not opposed to that. It's just the, the size of it and, and the placement of it. Mr. Burl is here. He, when he purchased his property from Randy Doll, he, I got a couple notices from the city saying that there were going to be some things going on. I read over them, thought they were great, went along with them. Doesn't bother me a bit. They sit behind me. They're beautifully done. They're kept in excellent shape. They added to the whole area. This, however, is, is right there. It's not, it's a, no matter how many ways you've had it, it's a thirty-two hundred square foot steel and metal building with a carport. And I, I, I'm absolutely certain at some point, maybe not in the next year or so, but when this property out here starts developing more, that's going to end up being a detriment. I know it's going to, the value on, I've talked to people that have come out and done appraisals for us, and they've even said to start putting metal buildings, or they would say, commercial-looking buildings, or industrial buildings that close to the road would probably impact my value. And again, I'm not against having a building. I just, one twice the size of the house is, is a little extreme.
And any questions? All right.
No.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Well, we've had two folks speak. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this case? All right.
The neighbor to the north, do you have any opposition or?
No, I don't have an opposition.
If you could please come up to the podium and state your name and address and, for the record.
My name is H.L. Boils. I live at eleven fifty-seven South Ginkgo Lane. The sixty-foot sliver that goes from Harry Street back allows me to contact, have a maintain access to that four acres that's behind. Furthermore, I don't have any objection to them building it, but I can also see Pam's situation, but need to say, I don't see that because of the trees that are between myself and Nathan. So I really don't have any objection.
What, I'm just gonna.
What all is your property there?
Pardon me?
It's like an L shape, maybe.
I have six point three acres of land there.
Yeah, he has the house also.
You got the, well, the, the north of this house.
Yes.
Get in from Ginkgo Lane and also.
Harry. Harry, yeah.
Yeah.
That's correct. Yep.
And that's only six some acres?
Six point three acres.
Okay. Do y'all share a private access through his property?
Uh, it's there. It's been there ever since we moved out here and was there previously, and why I don't know, but it's been utilized by all of us. But I have a private drive to my own property off of Ginkgo.
Yep.
If someone wanted to approach you about putting some trees in that buffer area, I guess you would be maybe okay with that to screen the view?
I'm currently putting in trees now.
Okay. That answers that question. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have some items to go through. If there's no one else here to speak, which doesn't look like there is, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
I have a question for Les. The distance from the house to the, to the west and to this new building, would that be about a hundred feet?
Probably more than a hundred.
Yeah, it's probably more than a hundred. Might be like a hundred and forty.
Mr. Boils just said he owns sixty feet.
Yes.
That sliver?
It was.
Plus the width of the driveway and. I think.
Then your setback.
And then the setback from off the property line.
Correct. You're.
That's only.
Something like a hundred and twenty feet minimum.
All right, so that, that's pretty close to the distance from her house to her north building. They're pretty similar in the distance.
If I had to guess, I would say that it was about two hundred feet from her house to the closest outbuilding.
I've done the math on that. It's, it's more than that, but if you look at the last page of his application, it has, is where he's putting the barn right on there, and shows, I think, easier how close that is. I mean, you can just take a, a ruler and compare that to.
Okay. Okay, we appreciate that, but next time, we just address this at the podium, please. All right. Any other questions, staff?
Well, um, Mrs. Baker, Mrs. Baker brought up the fact about a carport. Is there anything against carports in the city or less?
Not that I know of, Gary.
Okay.
This has to be inside the building area, you know, has to have setbacks and that stuff.
I actually had a question for the applicant.
Yes.
I think a, a lot of her concerns are relating to the fact of the size of the building, obviously, and the location. I think the location where you spotted it actually is very favorable for the city's standpoint, so if you built a twelve thousand square foot house in front of it, you're still good. But I guess, would you be opposed if we applied some sort of building setback to the front of it to maybe justify that it could not be built any closer to Harry Street than, say, two hundred foot or something to that effect?
Well, I think originally, we wanted to be as far north and as we could on that property with the appropriate setbacks. I will go as far north as I have to go to get.
Sure.
That achieved.
That, that would, that would give you a hundred and sixty-eight feet roughly to place it, that building. In the northernmost, well, this dimension, if everybody's following here.
Yeah.
If we were to put a, impose a setback on it so it wouldn't be out towards Harry Street, would I guess, so I would.
Well, what they're, what they're saying, they can't move it any further forward, any further back than what it is right now.
I understand that, but I guess what I'm saying is to help alleviate some of the concerns we've heard tonight, that it would prohibit them from placing the building further south, which would be exposing the large building even more so. I think where it's positioned actually is probably the best position to address her concerns as far as that goes. I don't know that there's anyplace else you could put it that would allow it to, to work. But you would be okay with a, a setback of, a sizable setback at the front for that structure if, if.
Means setback, meaning going north.
Yeah.
Yes.
North of, so say the first two hundred foot, you couldn't build, build the building, but on the back, a hundred and sixty's plus feet, you could still build it.
Have no problem with that. I'm not a, we could do some landscaping between there also, as large trees. We plan to do quite a few large trees. I have a, the newest.
Yeah.
I haven't shown it. It was, I didn't get in the packet in time, but I have a new site plan, if anybody'd like to look at that.
I.
Sure.
Yes.
I'd like to see it.
So I'm just wondering if you could bring the building in closer. I guess, gather that's just a concrete pad that's out there right now?
Thank you so much.
There's an RV on it.
I think this looks really great. I mean, as far as, absolutely.
And also maybe a, a tree or two in the front as well.
Yeah, okay.
And if a fence would help, we're very accommodating in that regard, too. I think as far as the scale on the two and a half acres to have a building that size, I don't think is out of scale. But it's going to be a very nice building. It's going to match and have the same effects as the house, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions regarding the new information you've received? Okay.
I think it would be appropriate to use this as a template for approval, you know, possibly. I think it, I think it looks like it's accomplished a lot of things with screening for the neighbor's benefit. Certainly, they've talked about a fence, but I think if we wanted to, we could maybe motion that it's in context or near, similar, similar approval to what has been provided to us here tonight.
And if he would work with, with Les on the appropriate screening, the trees for screening.
Yeah, I think, I think what he has shown here is appropriate.
Yeah.
Yep. What type of trees?
Right, cedar or something like that.
There's, yeah, there's no screening required in these situations.
That's right. Yeah, I think.
And since it's private to private.
And he's planning on doing it anyways.
I like the idea that the carport is on the, on the north side of it, or the west side of it, I guess.
It helps, it helps the pass.
Well, we do have some, not quite as extensive seventeen finders. We have a handful of findings to go through. Lynn or, or Mike or someone else, do you want to give us a break here or go through it?
Who do you want to read this?
You want me?
Yeah, you got it. It's your turn.
Uh, does the evidence demonstrate that? Is that what you're talking about?
You bet. That's it.
Okay.
The particular physical surrounding shape and tropical graphical conditions of the specific property involved would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon or for the owner, leasee, leassee, or occupant as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the provisions of these regulations were literally enforced because the subject property is two point two nine acres and surrounding properties also have a large accessory structures. The request for a variance is not based exclusible, exclusively upon the desire of the owner, leassee, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property because the applicant simply desires to have a large garage for storage with all his toys. I added that in. The granting of the variance will not be materially, materially detrimental or inju, injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the subject property is located because the subject property is two point two nine acres and surrounding properties also have a large accessory structures, and they also have a large acreage. The proposed variance will not impair an adequate supply of light and/or air to adjacent property. Substantially increased congestion, congestion on public streets erodes increased the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood because, again, the subject property is two point two nine acres.
Next. All right, I got it. Okay, so specified conditions to be met. That the or, that the variance requested arises from such conditions which is unique to the property in question and is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or applicant because the property, subject property is two point two nine acres and surrounded by property also, also have large accessory structures. That granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents because the property, subject property is two point two nine acres and surrounding properties also have large accessory structures. That strict application of the provisions of the regulation from, from which the variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner requesting, requested in the application because the subject property is two point two nine acres and surrounded properties also have large accessory buildings. That the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare because of the subject property is two point two nine acres and surrounding properties also have large accessory structures. That granting this variance desires, desired will not be opposed by the general spirit and intent of the, these regulations because the subject property is two point two nine acres and surrounding properties also have large accessory structures.
I think emphasis is a good point for us to remember later on, and that is if an acre lot came up wanting to do something like this, it probably wouldn't be quite as appropriate as a two point two nine acre lot.
No, setbacks would.
That's, that's what we want to think about.
It wouldn't fit.
Or it said, it just wouldn't be nothing else.
That's right, yeah.
All right. We've gone through our items here and reached a decision point. And looking for a motion. I might go ahead and motion this one.
I might go ahead and motion this one, if everybody's okay with that. Having considered the evidence of the hearing and determined that the findings, the fact in the variance report have been found to exist that support all five conditions set out in Section 10, 107 D1 of the zoning regulations and KSA 12, 15, uh, sorry, 1, 12, 759 E of the state statutes which are necessary for granting a variance, I, Brian Lindaback, move to the chair and be authorized to sign the resolution granting the variance for case BZAV 2017-12 as modified with the condition that there'd be a 200-foot building setback off of Harry Street and screening be provided as per the applicant has provided us on a site plan today.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And. No opposed. Closing remarks, this resolution will be prepared and made available by the applicant by November 30th. And if anybody's agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine the reasonableness within 30 days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. And we want to thank you guys for showing up. And we are down to one case.
And one person.
And one person. And this is item number 10, BZAV 2017-13. It's a public hearing on an application filed by Ryan. You're going to have to help me with your last name. Wyrock, thank you.
Wyrock. I wouldn't have guessed that.
I hate, I hate pronouncing it incorrectly. Requesting a variance of 1,000 square feet from the required 1,000 square feet maximum aggregate for a total floor area for the purpose of constructing a 2,000-square-foot detached garage on property zone R1, single-family residential district located at 706 West Willow Road, Annover, Kansas. The applicant desires to construct a large detached garage on this property, and staff knows no reason not to approve the variance as requested pending the outcome of the public hearing. Well. We can certainly do that from hereforth. Yeah. Okay. We go through a couple housekeeping items here real quick and on with this. So notification, we were notified on this case in the Butler County Times Gazette, October 28, 2017, and notices were mailed to the applicant and eight owners of records of real property in the area of notification. On October 25, 2017, the owner of record shows at least 20 days have elapsed, and therefore I'll declare that proper notification has been given. Are there any disqualifications on this item?
No, not here.
All right, good. Me neither. Ex parte communications?
Nope.
Nope, good, all right. Les, what do you have to share with us on this case?
I think it's pretty self-explanatory by the application and the memo. It's a rather large lot in a single-family neighborhood with large lots. Staff doesn't feel that the building is out of character for the neighborhood.
All right. Looks like there's a pond on the property, and I presume this, this structure would be somewhere west of that pond if this is north. Or I think we're actually north is, to the east. Okay.
That's up against Teradyne.
Yep, rotated now. All righty. Any additional questions of staff before we bring the applicant up?
Not here.
All right, well, you've waited plenty long enough.
Oh, they don't care.
I'm going to request that my next variance, I go first. I burned that.
Yeah.
Ryan Wyrock, 706 West Willow Road, Annover, Kansas.
Any questions?
Can we go back to the screening question?
Yeah.
No, actually, maybe this is something I'll talk about later with Les. How close is there, can I go to the north? Is there any kind of restriction on that?
20 foot.
Yep.
25 feet.
25. 25? So what I, what I proposed was 35, I think, so.
Okay.
That's it. There are any height requirements, limitations?
35 feet. Sorry.
I'm at like 23-ish.
Okay.
You got 12 more feet to go.
Yeah.
That would be a man mansion.
Well, I think that answers any questions I had. Anybody else have any questions?
How's it going to be finished, just out of curiosity? Is, you said it's a pole barn?
Rusty, no, I'm just kidding. My house is actually a stone, limestone facade, and when I bought that property in 2014, I actually remodeled it and added onto it. So I've got seven pallets of limestone back to the north. And so, and I actually harvested off of the existing barn there, the cedar siding, and my house is currently sited in cedar, so I'm going to use a stone wainscoting, probably just on the face, because I have some other things I'm going to do with that stone. Cedar, it's going to be flammable.
So somebody on the golf course looking over is going to say, "That's a nice man cave. I wish I lived there."
I hope so. So my, my, my goal is for them to let me cut a hole in the fence. Permission this time.
Take your golf cart out there.
Well, we do appreciate your patience, and we'll try to get through this here. All right, seeing no one is present, I'll close the public hearing. Well, anybody volunteer to go through the, demonstrating the facts here?
Sure, I'll stumble through it.
Okay.
Number one, the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical condition of the specific property involved would result in a particular difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon or for the owner, leasing, or occupant as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the provisions, provisions of this regulation were literally enforced because the subject property is 2.7 acres and surrounding properties on large lots also have large accessory structures. Number two, the request for a variance is not based exclusively upon a desire of the owner, leasing, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property because the applicant simply desires to have a larger detached garage for storage. Number three, the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental, detrimental or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the subject property is located because the subject property is 2.7 acres and surrounding properties on large lots also have large accessory structures. Number four, the proposed variance will not impair an adequate supply of light or air to adjacent property substantially increase congestion on public streets or roads, increase the danger of fire, endanger the public safety, or substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood because the subject property is 2.7 acres and surrounding properties on large lots also have large accessory structures.
Okay, we have some specific conditions to meet as well. Just five more to go.
Okay, do you want me to stumble through those?
Go right ahead.
Number one, that the variance requested arises from such condition which is unique to the property in question and which is not ordinarily, ordinarily found in the same zoning district and is not created by an action or actions of the property owner or the applicant because the subject property is 2.7 acres and surrounding properties on large lots also have large accessory structures. Number two, that granting of the variance will not adversely affect the rights of the adjacent property owners or residents because the subject property is 2.7 acres and surrounding properties on large lots also have large accessory structures. Number three, that strict application of the provisions of this regu, of these regulations from which a variance is requested will constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner represented in the application because the subject property is 2.7 acres and surrounding properties on large lots also have large accessory structures. Number four, that the variance desired will not adversely affect the public, public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare because the subject property is 2.7 acres and surrounding properties on large lots also have large accessory structures. Number five, that granting the variance desired will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these regulations because the subject property is 2.7 acres and surrounding properties on large lots also have large accessory structures.
Okay.
I gotta use your word ditto in here.
I think, yeah, I think that about does it. We've heard all the findings and factors, and they do support the case. I'd like to have a motion. Anyone?
I'll make it. Having considered the evidence of the hearing, determined that the findings, facts in the variance report have been found to exist the support of all five conditions set in Section 10-107 D1 of the zoning regulations of KSA 12-759 E of the state statutes which is necessary for granting, granting of the variance, I, Mike Warington, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign resolution granting the variance for case number BZAV 2017-13 as requested.
Go ahead, Gary.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. And closing remarks, the resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant by November 30th. And if anybody's agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to the district court to determine the reasonableness within 30 days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. Thank you so much.
I make a motion, we adjourn the board of zoning appeals, and we convene a planning commission.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second by Lynn and William, yes. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And we have some member items tonight, and then I don't know if we need to stick around a little after that.
Yes.
I have a member item. I'd like staff to accept my resignation tonight from the planning commission. It's been an honor to serve on the planning commission for, gosh, a year and a half, something like that. So it's been a pleasure, and I'm sure I'll see many other things come from here to city council.
Mike can't continue serving because we'll probably have another zoning case next month that he'll be on the city council, have to consider, so.
Understood, yeah.
Matt, thanks, Mike, for serving for the year and a half, and we look forward to working with you on the city council. But that does prompt some discussion about the, those terms that are expiring. Kirsten's term is expiring, Tyson's term is expiring. They both expressed that they won't be returning. Marcus talked to a couple of potential members, but we just wanted to kind of gauge the board tonight to make sure that come December, and then again in January, we're going to be able to field the team. You know, we have to have at least five members present for a quorum.
Okay.
So. Everybody who's on here want to continue on, or does anybody have a hardship that they can't continue on?
I'm good for my term.
I'm good. I'm just sorry I started late.
The only comment I made, and I sent an email, is that if things go correctly, I'm going to be retiring from work next, say, first of June, plus or minus around that timeframe, and we'll be doing some traveling. So if I, anytime I can be replaced conveniently, that would be fine. If I stay on the committee, I will miss a few meetings when we are traveling. And I'm not talking about that many. I'm just, you know, maybe one or two in the summer and one or two in the winter.
So we need a, we need, we need another planning commissioner for sure, is what it sounds to me. At least one. Probably four. Yeah. Yeah.
Kind of in the same. If I could be replaced conveniently. Could you need somebody outside of the county? Is that what, is that what you're looking for? Yeah.
If we get one more, you're out of here.
Okay. I don't want to be, it's, it's my kids' schedules.
I get it. No, you're, I mean, I'll tell you what. You can talk about it for another month. Let me look and see if there's anybody outside the city who could possibly replace you.
We just have one outside of the city now, or two?
There's two.
Two, that's what I thought. I was one of them years ago.
Buy some property out in the camp.
Oh, that's actually fresh wind, didn't you?
You ran next to me.
My father always tells me about that all the time.
Oh, does he? That, that does happen, yes. We just, yep, we're on the same street there.
Well, I just want to say thank you, too, for giving me the opportunity. I've learned a ton. I'm just trying to grow my business right now, and we are starting a family, so I'm really excited about that. But it just kind of helps me reevaluate my commitments, and I'm always open in the future for, if there's another appointment, so. Thank you, and congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if everybody possibly could be at the next meeting, because we will have another pretty big case, we think in Teradyne, I think that's December 19th, is that correct? So please, anybody who can possibly could be at the next meeting. I know it's Christmas time, but.
Okay.
So we got one, two, three, four, five. All five of us have to be there, is that what you're trying to say?
We'll try to see if Tyson will show up for one last meeting.
Okay.
All right, gotcha.
So we have one resignation, only just one, well, two resignations for sure, and Tyson, I guess, resigned subsequent to that.
We could use you at one more meeting, Kristen. I should say that, too.
I, December is like my worst time of the year, but if there's any chance I can be there, I will definitely try.
All right, well, thank you, Mike, for serving as vice chair. I know you've helped run some meetings, and amongst other things, you've done a really good job, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll need to find another vice next meeting.
I guess so, yeah. Good point. Well, at that, maybe we should just adjourn.
Any member items?
Is that it?
Is that it? Okay. I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it. I'll third it.
We have a motion and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.